All right, it's seven o'clock and we will begin tonight's meeting. Take roll call and all five board members are present as well as Emma is joining us, our student representative from the class of 2020. So, welcome back Emma and hope all is going well. At this time, I invite everyone to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I invite Kim Bizik to share his communication.
Thank you. Results of the April 7th spring election for school board determine that Kathy Weed Vincent was reelected to a regular three-year term. She will take her oath of office at tonight's meeting. The annual board reorganization will be conducted at the meeting to fill the offices of president, vice president, clerk, and treasurer for the coming year. Initial interviews for the director of equity and instruction were held, and finalist candidates will be going to a staff panel later this week and early next week. Wisconsin Act 185 was signed into law on April 15th. The law officially removes state assessment and reporting requirements, including the school and district report cards published in the fall for the 2019-2020 school year. A virtual job site tour has been shared with the board to replace the in-person tours that were canceled with the safer-at-home order. Our construction partners from CG Schmidt will be creating monthly virtual tours, which will be posted on the construction updates page of the district website. WASB is advising school districts to consider the impact of reduced tax revenue and budget planning for the 2020-2021 school year. Mr. Mitchell and I have been running projections with significant loss of revenue and shared those projections with staff on April 14th in a webinar. Staff have been offered an opportunity to share ideas for budget reductions and alternative revenue options. While the board approved the salary structure in March, administration has frozen placement on the salary structure for staff until more information on revenues and budget is known. The business office will be sharing information publicly on how a budget is developed and the current projections at a webinar, School Finance 101 on May 5th. Community members have been provided information on how to register for the session through the community newsletter, the district website, and Facebook posts. The school connection should be mailed this week and registration information is also included in the print publication. SWSA and other professional organizations have offered some information about possible restrictions based on health guidelines for the return to school. Administration is monitoring recommendations and planning for strategies to maintain health guidelines. Summer school for the high school will be offered exclusively online this summer. Administration is conducting a survey of elementary and middle school families around interest in various delivery models for summer school. I'm working with the village manager to confirm a joint meeting with the village board in May. The agenda could include shared technology services and the welcoming diversity action plan update. The sophomore class received information on the application process for the student board member position for 2020 through 2022. Interviews will be conducted in May with the principal, the superintendent, the board president, and outgoing student member Emma Bodie. Greendale Schools French Language Program has received an exemplary award from the American Association of Teachers of French. This prestigious award recognizes the outstanding quality of the French program in the district. Greendale is one of 10 programs in the country to earn the award in 2020. The American Association of Teachers of French founded in 1927 is the largest association of French teachers in the world with close to 9,000 members. It offers enrichment and support to teachers and recognizes high achievement in teachers and students. Congratulations to Sarah Thompson, our district's French language teacher, and to our French students. Administration and student council advisors met with the class officers today and continue to plan for prom and graduation in a creative way, given the current CDC guidance. At the middle school eighth grade student council officers met with administration to consider options for the eighth grade farewell event. And the following donations were received by the park and rec department. An anonymous $300 donation for programs and activities and a $100 donation from Deborah and Wayne Larson of Key West, Florida, and $25 from Luann and Richard Burdick of Greendale in memory of Santa Delano, a former member of the Greendale Senior Social Club. And that concludes my communications.
All right, thank you, Kim. Any communications that the board wishes to share at this time? All right, then we'll continue on and we'll hear comments. So comments that have been received either through email or phone call. And I think, Kim, you'll be able to share that with the community as well as with the full board.
Yes. The first comment is from Darnisha Garbadi. And she writes, according to Psychology Today, race-related trauma is defined as exposure to traumatic events due to an individual's race. Specifically, race-related trauma is a byproduct of racism when racism disrupts the psychology, psychological, emotional, and physical well-being of children and adolescents. Racism proceeds to disrupt a young person's sense of belonging, their relationship with others, and their access to resources. According to the National Center for Educational Statistics, of the students suspended between 6th and 12th grade, 38.8% were Black students compared to 15.6% of white students. Students of color experienced decreased sense of belonging to their social networks in school due to higher rates of school suspension. Continuous suspension also leads to academic gaps, lower grades, which also negatively impacts college selection and admission, attrition, and to some extent denies the most disenfranchised students access to academic assistance, free or reduced meals, and other supports. Pilot research conducted in the Collective Health and Education Equity Research lab codified retrospective accounts from Black and Latino students in the public education system. Findings are revealing a trajectory confounded by race and trauma. Using the public school system as the backdrop, the race-related trauma framework aims to identify how schools exercise power and control against Black and Brown children and adolescents through alienation discriminatory policies and practices and psychological violence. A framework for race-related trauma seeks to enlighten individuals who acknowledge their role in perpetuating race-related trauma and seek credible solutions. Alienation can lead to adverse physical and psychological processes. School suspension requires an absence from school and related activities, which leads to a sense of alienation. Black and Brown children and adolescents may not always experience physical alienation. In fact, they may also experience psychological alienation. A 2010 article by Hasher and Haggenauer suggests young people who experience continued failure in school will often create cognitive and emotional distance between themselves and the school system, resulting in feelings of disconnectiveness, dissociation, and disengagement from school. Well-being Black and Brown students will also experience immense psychological violence. These young people will experience racial invalidation through removal of Black Studies courses in high school and allow teachers to use subtle language that includes, "Miss Rivera, can you tell the class what it is like being an immigrant?" Symbolic violence in the form of rejection of the culture of Black Indigenous American and Latino students through school practices and curricula can be harmful to psychological well-being. Such violence forces assimilation and will require many of these young people to cope and adapt quickly. A framework for race-related trauma can potentially help individuals think about ways in which they can focus intervention and advocacy. Advocacy will need to take place at the individual and institutional level, challenging our own biases and notions about students and ameliorating the systematic practices that deter young people from reaching their full potential. The next comment is from Holly Curtis. My name is Holly Curtis, co-founder of The Voice, a nonprofit organization for diversity that fights against discrimination within our community. The Voice is asking the district to increase their efforts in the Chapter 220 program to bring in more minorities. We would like to see the minority population increase to 40% or more within our schools. We also ask you to add African-American studies and minority teachers to our district. This will ensure the district's efforts that they are willing to welcome diversity into our community. We can't do workshops, action plans, and programs of diversity if we don't increase our population with diversity. We also ask the district to increase their effort and fairness to work with actual people of color when making decisions. This will ensure that right choices are made solely on what people of color want based on their own opinions and experiences. Decisions about our well-being can't be decided by a majority white community or by one person of color, but by many people of color, backgrounds, and religions. We know what is best for us and what we would like to see happen. We also ask the district to provide more than just African-American dancers to expose students to African-American culture. We are so much more than entertainers. We don't want to have our children think that all African-Americans, that's all African-Americans can provide. We are business owners, artists, inventors, scientists, teachers, doctors, police officers, and more. It would be better to provide our students with African-American studies, students writing essays in history class for social studies about African-American leaders or field trips to the Black Holocaust Museum. We also would like the district, we would also ask the district to be part of the annual Martin Luther King Speech Contest held within the city of Milwaukee. This is how we provide diversity and inclusion within our community. The next comment is from Kendall Curtis, who identifies himself as speaking for The Voice. As we're experiencing tough times with the coronavirus and diversity, it's even more important that we show inclusiveness through the district. The Greendale School District started off well, however, the Greendale Welcomes Diversity Meetings don't seem to reflect the direction Greendale is going. There's four committees that make up the Greendale Welcomes Diversity Plan. However, they seem to be controlled by one nonofficial group. No access is being shared with other groups or Greendale taxpayers. The access isn't on the district's website, neither are the dates and times when these sessions will occur. The school district citizens and students all suffered when we lost the former superintendent Gary Kiltz due to resignation as a result of issues that were caught too late. The district must be proactive instead of reactive as issues occur. Access to all meetings must not be left up to one group or a single individual that's not an official part of the school district or the village. It's especially at this time, the district should ensure that meeting dates, times, and access to Zoom meetings are posted on the district's website or sent out by official members of the district. Currently, a resident must join a group and be approved by that group before being allowed to access certain meetings. As part of the district steering committee and a minority, I have also not received dates or times for Zoom meetings. I walked out of the last meeting because I felt very unwelcome, as I explained to the room of members at that time. Our major concern is that myself, an African-American, was not welcomed by the district meeting. This may be what the community is experiencing. The Greendale Welcoming Diversity Action Plan has been in place for over a year. Currently, there has been little success reported to taxpayers. It is, it's believed this is a result of non-clarity to taxpayers, the district's not reaching out to all official local minority groups within Greendale for assistance, and not aggressively attempting to add the culture of the district by increasing the minority populations, primarily African-American. The Greendale Welcomes Diversity Action Plan has been in existence for over a year and has failed to make significant progress. There are no reports of growing minority populations in the district with teachers, students, or administrators. It is clear more needs to be done. Because this may be one of the causes of endless items being added to an endless action plan that doesn't immediately impact students or taxpayers, it is at this time, no member of any group should leave. Be chairman or co-chairman of any district committees, including current steering committees. This will help to avoid hidden agendas, added unnecessary layers, and allow progress to begin. This should take effect immediately. I want to clarify two pieces. First, the Welcoming Diversity Action Plan is a joint, a joint plan that the district has a vested interest in, but the district does not control the plan itself. We have recognized the plan and supported it. And the second being that the plan was reviewed and adopted by the community in October, which was six months ago. The next comment is from Dee Marriott. After reading the Greendale School Equity Report, I have a couple of questions. The report talks about how it is working on equity. I think it is ironic coming from Sarah Derrick, who called the police on Shanice when she was called the N-word. Mrs. Derrick told another student who was called a racial slur, "That is just how he talks." Do you think this is the appropriate person to lead talks on equity when to this day she has not apologized for the trauma she caused students of color? The work also acknowledged a group, The Voice. The founder of The Voice has spoken openly about the district's welcoming diversity committees. I know Kathleen Vincent is a member of The Voice and a member of the Welcoming Diversity Steering Committee. I would think this would be a huge conflict of interest. I also look to see if I could find meeting locations and minutes, but I have not been successful. Kathleen, please email me this information. I also read this is a nonprofit organization, so please share the 501(c)(3) information. So if people want to donate to this Facebook group, they can. I also could not locate this information. The next comment is from Shanice Knox. Hello, my name is Shanice Knox. I was talking to my family on a Zoom call and we were having a great conversation. We all went around and talked about what we have been up to and what we are looking forward to once the quarantine is over. I talked about how my college choices were affected because of what happened to me last year. I was called the N-word two times in one week and I got punished for it. Sarah Derrick called the cops on me and refused to let me call my mom. I'm still very disappointed in the administration for how they handled my situation and the way they treated me. I didn't realize how bad I was affected by this incident. I protested. I talked at the school board meetings more than 10 times trying to share my pain with hopes the school board members would take a stand for right. But everyone ignored me and told me, "Thank you for your comments." Retelling my story is still hard for me to do because I never got assurance that standing up for yourself is okay. I still work on equity because I do not want any other students of color to go through what I went through. This is something I will carry the rest of my life. The trauma I went through could have been prevented, but I was ignored. What I need is an apology from Derrick and the police officer who told me she is going to say it again, to admit they were wrong. The last comment tonight is from Paige, submitted by Nat Godley. Paige was founded a year ago in the wake of Greendale Schools mishandling of an incident with Shanice Knox, in which Shanice Knox was racially attacked by another student. As if the culmination of a series of such incidents were not enough, the school administration grossly mishandled her response to being called the N-word, casting doubt on her account, her motives, and her character, blaming her as the victim and invoking excessive penalties, including suspension and police involvement. Although the school's administration eventually lifted the various penalties that initially assessed against her, a comprehensive apology from Greendale Schools to Ms. Knox is clearly in order, as well as a meaningful acknowledgement of the lasting detrimental impact on her emotional health and academic progress. But Paige was not founded solely to support Ms. Knox and her mother, Deanneah Marriott, in their individual struggle for justice. Indeed, we were founded to push for wider change with Ms. Knox and Ms. Marriott's blessing and encouragement to help ensure that other students did not have to go through what Shanice suffered. As Shanice prepares to go to college, she has realized that the legacy of racism, not just interpersonal, but especially institutional, will continue to follow her. How many other Shanices are out there? How many other Greendale students are living with the pain of knowing not only that some of their peers hate them for who they are, but also that the educators, school administrators, and ultimately Board of Education members whose job it is to protect them and ensure their right to a safe education have repeatedly failed to do so? It does not matter whether the failure stems from malice, neglect, or lack of understanding. The impact is the same. Vulnerable young people are hurt and that hurt can last for years. We are encouraged by the steps made over the past year, from the Greendale Welcomes Diversity Action Plan to the current search for a director for equity and instruction. But these efforts need to be sustained and they need to be effective. And that requires intentional and focused work by those at the top. Paige calls on the Greendale Board of Education to renew and intensify its efforts and to put equity and inclusion at the center of all its decisions, whether curricular, financial, staffing, or other. Lives, maybe not physical, but certainly the lifelong personal and professional welfare of impacted students are at stake. And that concludes the comments.
All right, thank you, Kim. And I think you'll hear throughout tonight's board meeting whether we're talking about some of the policy updates or we're talking about the equity agreement and updates. You'll hear us talk about equity as a focus and a priority with the district. So thank you, Kim. Continuing on with the agenda, tonight's agenda is the first meeting after the spring elections. So there's a couple of things that we will do at tonight's meeting. The first one is we will have Kathleen Weed Vincent, who was reelected as part of the Board of Education, to take the oath of office at tonight's meeting. So Kathy, I think you've got the oath of office with you, if you could just recite it for public posterity.
I, Kathleen Weed Vincent, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Greendale School Board Member to the best of my ability, so help me God. And then, do you mind if I make a quick statement?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank the residents of Greendale for your continued support and for my reelection to the Greendale School Board. I do look forward to serving the children of our community in this role. And I will continue to put the needs of our children first in my decision-making. So I want to thank you again for your trust in me.
All right, thanks, Kathy. So next, or continuing on with the reorganization of tonight's board meeting is we're at a point now where we will elect the officers for the upcoming year. So beginning now until next spring. So at this time, the State of Wisconsin requires the Board of Education of districts like Greendale to reorganize and elect officers of the board. And this must take place on or after the Fourth Monday in April and within a set time limit of 30 days. So at this time, as the current president, I will turn it over to Kim as the superintendent to provide over the meeting for nominations for president of the board.
The process of determining the president for the upcoming year is now called to order. Is there a nomination for president?
I nominate Joe Crippido for president.
Is there a second to the nomination of Joe Crippido for president of the Board of Education?
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? At this time, nominations are closed. The board may proceed to a roll call vote. Let's see. Kim Salem?
Yes.
Kathy Vincent?
Yes.
Noel George Yanish?
Yes.
Thor Misko?
Yes.
And Joe Crippido?
Yes.
Motion carries. Joe Crippido has been elected as president of the Greendale Board of Education effective April 27, 2020.
Thank you to the board and I appreciate, and I look forward to continuing serving the board as well as the community. And I am proud to serve with everyone on the board and continue to put students first and working with the administration. So we will then continue the board reorganization process for each of the three officers, including vice president, secretary, and treasurer. So at this time, is there a nomination for vice president?
I nominate Thor Misko.
Is there a second to the nomination of Thor Misko for vice president?
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And for a third time, I'll ask, are there any other nominations? All right, at this time, nominations are closed and I'll call a roll call vote, starting with Kim Salem?
Yes.
With Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes. Got it.
And I am, yes. Congratulations, Thor Misko has been elected as vice president of the Greendale Board of Education effective April 27, 2020. At this time, I will then call for nominations for secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I nominate Kathy Weed Vincent.
Is there a second to the nomination of Kathleen Weed Vincent for secretary of the Greendale Board of Education?
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And for a third time, are there any other nominations? All right, at this time, nominations are closed and I'll call for a roll call vote. Kim Salem?
Yes.
Thor Misko?
Yes.
Noel George Yanish?
Yes.
Kathleen Weed Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes as well. So congratulations, Kathleen Weed Vincent has been elected as secretary of the Greendale Board of Education effective April 27, 2020. Continuing on with the board officers, is there a nomination for treasurer?
I nominate Noel George Yanish for treasurer.
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And for a third time, are there any other nominations? All right, at this time, nominations are closed and I'll call for a roll call vote, starting with Kim Salem?
Yes.
Thor Misko?
Yes.
Noel George Yanish?
Yes.
And Kathleen Weed Vincent?
Yes.
And I am, yes, as well. And Noel George Yanish has been elected as treasurer of the Greendale Board of Education effective April 27, 2020. So congratulations, everyone. And as I said, I know we'll continue to move this district forward and we'll continue to work with our newly appointed superintendent, Ms. Midsick, and continue to focus on all that is good that's happening within the district. The next item that we continue on is approval of depositories of district funds. So again, this is part of our board reorganization. We approve what bank accounts and what banks we are using for the different depository accounts. So you saw a note from Marquez and Jonathan that talks about the different bank accounts. Jonathan, is there anything that you want to add or touch upon?
No, I think you've hit it there, Joe. They're all listed there in terms of using US Bank, the local government investment pool, the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative. That one was set up specifically with financing around our construction debt that we took out as before, as we spend it, that those dollars are invested. The North Shore Bank for food service and Tri-City for park and recreation deposits.
Okay, and any questions about that? Jonathan, have any of these changed since last year?
These have not changed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about this?
I think it's just my understanding that the lunch account, that one is non-interest bearing, is that correct? For the food services?
Yeah.
The North Shore Bank food service depository account?
That, that I could not say for sure. I'll do a follow-up in terms of what interests we get on that account during the year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? All right, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, is there any reason to have so many different banks or any value in having multiple different banks versus using the same bank for different accounts? Is it just departmental preference?
Yeah, there's some history of preference that's developed over time. I think there's some different community connections that we have through multiple banks over the years. And so one of the tasks that we've had in my first year is to look at a request for proposal to see what could be offered by one bank to bring these together. So we've had some conversations locally with Tri-City, BMO, US Bank, and gone in and had some conversations about that and kind of the services that we would be looking for to bring that together. We have not finalized any RFP, but that is a project that we have in queue to take on in the next few months.
Is that something that if any changes are made, that would then Is that something that if any changes are made, that would then take place next year at this time when we do another reorganization? Is that how it would work?
We would, we would get the depositories approved by the board and then at appropriate time. Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise I'm looking for a motion to approve the depositories for the upcoming year.
I move approval of the depositories of district funds as outlined in agenda item one point three.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second to approve depositories of district funds. Any further discussion? All right. Then I call for a roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yep.
And Kathy?
Yes.
And I am yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda. So again, this is an annual reorganization. So we take a look at the board member committee assignments and attached to the agenda was item one point four that shows the current board committee assignment. So this includes, you know, our former board member, John Kamisky. But attached to it is, you know, the, the different committee assignments. So we'll assign them based on people's interests. We've typically talked through this. So if there's more than one person interested, we'll try to talk through what maybe some alternatives are. So I think, Kim, you've, you've been able to get feedback to share where people's interests are.
Yes. So we'll start with the CISA one delegate. Kathy and Noel have both expressed a high interest in that position. So if you want to talk through who would be the one that we should assign to that, that would be good.
Okay. So CISA one delegate, I think there's an upcoming meeting next month where the, the Greendale Board of Education participates in that annual convention and participates in that. So how many, there's there's eight different committee members, you know, amongst the, the five of us. So everyone will, everyone will have an opportunity to serve and we may tap into some people to serve on a couple of committees.
Well, I'm good, I'm good with Noel. If that is one that you'd like to take Noel, provided I can get one of the other ones that I'm looking at, but I think you'd be great for that too.
Okay. Thank you.
The next one is the WASB delegate and liaison. And Kathy expressed the highest level of interest in WASB, serving as the WASB delegate and liaison.
Okay. So this is, you know, kind of being the liaison to the WASB, keeping us informed of what's happening there. The biggest commitment is attending that delegate assembly in January at the state convention. So Kathy, you've sounded as if you're still interested in serving in that capacity.
Yes, I'd love to.
All right. Any other questions or comments from any of the other board members? Okay. The next committee then, Noel, you've been on the Greendale Education Foundation. So they do plan a couple of events. The Cheers event is probably the primary one. But then also on that, as part of that is the GOES foundation, or the GOES Scholarship Committee, where that typically goes to a graduating senior. So I think there's some involvement that a board member would have in that group.
Yes. And I will say that Thor expressed the highest level of interest in this committee, higher than the other members of the board.
So Thor, is that something that you'd like to do? And Noel, is that something that you would, if you, if you start doing, if, if you're involved with other things perhaps, then is that one that you would like to transition from?
Sure. I would be happy to turn it over to Thor. Not that I didn't during my time on the Education Foundation. They're a good group.
Okay, good. Thor, then you'll, we can, we'll put you down for that component.
Sounds like a plan. I look forward to working with them.
All right, great. The next group is the Policy Committee. So this is, we have had two board members participate in the Policy Committee. And I think the Policy Committee tries to meet every other month, so about six times a year, where that Policy Committee reviews and works with administration, develop a first reading that then is brought to the full board. So the full board does review and approve every policy, but this Policy Committee gets into the, the nits and nats of the, the policy. So Kim, who's?
Yeah. So three people expressed the highest level of interest in this, and that's Kathy, Noel and Thor. And so I think in terms of distributing responsibilities that and in terms of other committees, that it may be if I would suggest based on other areas of interest that I'm seeing that Noel and Thor be the ones that serve on that. And I open it up for your discussion.
Any thoughts or comments about that then?
I definitely, I do like being part of the Policy Committee, just because that's really a big driving force of what we do. So I, I mean, unless one of the two of you is like on the fence or whatever, I, I, I guess I can go either way. So.
I would like to try it because I haven't had the opportunity to and I was, wanted to last year, but I I didn't. So because I knew that I was going to be treasurer for the first time, so I let that go. But I'd like to try it if that's, if you're open to it.
Thor, I guess.
Yeah. And this is a, this is another one that I'm definitely very, very interested in. So if you know, if that makes sense, I'd love to serve with, you know, Noel then on this as we step forward into the next school year.
All right. I guess.
All right. So it sounds as if that Noel and Thor, that's why I heard that will be part of that Policy Committee for the upcoming school year. And, and I know you know, like I said, the board, the full board here is all the policies. So just want to make sure that everyone understands and, you know, that if you're not on the committee, everyone will still review things and have an opportunity to provide feedback and input. The Park and Recreation Committee, so this is something where as part of our Park and Recreation, has a separate board. Members of both the, the school board as well as the village board participate in this. And, and I don't know if they meet monthly or maybe less frequently than that. I know Thor, you've been involved with that for a couple of years in different roles. And Noel, I think you were involved prior to your board, prior to your time on the board. So Kim, Amidzik, what, where are people's interest with this?
So Thor and Kim Salem had an equal level of interest. And given Thor's other committee assignments, I would suggest that Kim be the Park and Rec Board representative.
I think that, I, I think that'd be a good, good opportunity, Kim, to get involved with, you know, others in the community as well. You know, there's, they do a lot of good stuff. And I think, you know, Jackie, Jackie has a good team there. And, and you know, the, the board then provides some direction and feedback. So I, I think that would be a good, good opportunity for you.
And we can connect to off, offline to Kim. I can share some feedback and insights on the things that we kind of expect in that role. They meet every other month essentially.
Okay, great. I'd love to. Thank you, Thor.
And then the next responsibility we have is, we, a couple of years ago, we combined this, the Legislative Advocacy and then the SWASA liaison. So SWASA is Southwest Wisconsin School Alliance. And basically it's a, it's a consortium of a number of school districts within Southeast Wisconsin that, that advocate for public education at the state level, which is why we combine that with the Legislative Advocacy Liaison. That person then typically provides updates to the board on what may be happening at, in Madison or in Washington DC at the state and federal level that may impact different items. So Kim, the interest level there?
Kathy is the one with the highest level of interest in this committee.
So I did have a question, Kim, and I, I think, I think you participate in those SWSA meetings as well. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, so the one question I had is, it may, the meetings may conflict with my work schedule at times, but we would have someone from the district representing in my absence?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know how often they meet?
They meet monthly on a Tuesday at seven thirty in the morning.
Okay. And it, it is possible I'll be able to, you know, adjust some schedule to do that since it is so early. Is it about an hour long, two hours, or how long are the meetings?
It ranges from an hour to an hour and a half.
Okay.
Where do they take place, Kim? That's in Puywalki or?
Um, it depends. They'll be at a school district office usually.
Okay. All right. So then Kathy, we'll look to you and then, though, like you said, those are meetings that administration typically attends as well. So as your schedule is allows, that's a great opportunity. But then we'll look to you to provide legislative updates at our monthly board meetings as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And then Village Board Liaison. This is something where in the past we've, you know, met with the superintendent, the village manager and the village president to continue to plan our, you know, biannual meetings with, with the village board.
Yeah. So Joe and Thor both expressed the highest level of interest in this. And I would suggest that you consider both serving together as it won't form a quorum. And I think it would be a good shared leadership opportunity.
Okay. I'm open to that. I think, you know, what, what we've then done is use that as a way to build that relationship with, with the village board as well.
Makes sense to me.
And then the, the Time for Learning. So Time for Learning Board is our 4K program. So our 4K program operates as a charter school. Now the school district of Greendale holds that charter. But as such, we we do have us another board that kind of helps oversee and provides guidance and provides a framework. So I know, Kim, if there's anything more about that role or who was interested in that?
I'm the only person interested in that is Kim.
Okay. Given, the, the young, the young family that you have, that's, that's a great opportunity.
Yes, I love the littles.
All right. So I think CISA one delegate liaison. Noel, you are going to be responsible for that. The WASB Delegate Assembly Liaison. Kathleen, you are going to be responsible for that. The Greendale Education Foundation goes. Thor, we're going to switch you out this year for that. Policy Committee then was going to be Thor and Noel. Park and Rec Committee was going to be Kim. Legislative Advocacy Liaison with SWASA was going to be Kathy. Thor and I were going to work with the village board. And then Kim Salem was going to be the Time for Learning Board Member.
Yes.
All right.
And I would suggest that the board, that we plan for a retreat in June to talk about the role of the school board and look at how you want to function as a board. And consider at that time identifying a liaison to other community groups to be able to listen to voices within the community. So that's something that we can consider because we've identified these committees as committees of the board. But from a communication perspective, you've set goals in the past around increasing communication with members of the community. And one way to do that might be to offer other liaison positions to connect with the community.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think that's a good opportunity.
Would it be all right if I just make a statement, something that was mentioned in the citizen comment section tonight? I, I think it's a great opportunity that you're talking about this, Kim, to have a liaison. And I personally am not a member of any group. As people know, there are different groups that put pages out there on Facebook. So I have been following different groups that are connected with the community. But I think it would be outstanding if we would have a liaison to the different groups that we're working with in the community.
All right. Thanks for that clarification, Kathy. Yeah, I think that's something that we can maybe talk about at a board retreat. I did attend in January, a, at the state convention, a presentation by the school district of Sun Prairie. And they had something similar. Now, Sun Prairie is a much bigger, a much larger school district, just, you know, overall population, size of the schools and even just geography area. But I think there's some interesting things there that we could take a look at. All right. So we, we are scheduled to approve these board committee assignments for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one year. Any further discussion? Otherwise I'll call for a motion to approve.
I move to approve committee assignments of, I'll go through each of them, I guess. Noel as CISA one delegate, Kathleen as WASB delegate. Kim Salem as Park and Rec Committee Member. Thor and Joe as joint liaisons for village board. Thor for Greendale Education Foundation. Kim for Time for Learning. Thor and Noel for policy. And then Kathleen for Legislative Advocate and SWSA liaison.
Is there a second?
I second.
I'm sorry.
There's been a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All right. Then I call for a roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am yes as well. So we will then get that updated. So thank you everyone for going through all that. Next on the agenda, just the approval of the board meeting minutes of April sixth. Any questions or comments? Otherwise I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move approval of the regular meeting minutes of April sixth as outlined in agenda item two point one.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second to approve the board meeting minutes. Any further discussion? And I call for a roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the financial report, including checks and disbursements for this month. So Jonathan, anything that you'd like to highlight or share?
Yeah. So this is for the period ending March thirty first of two thousand and twenty. We took a look at revenue expenditures. Those both matched prior year. So we are on track in terms of monitoring the budget for this year. Fifty nine point seven two percent of revenues for nineteen twenty, that was just above the prior year, fifty nine point four two. And then on the expense side, we were slightly below prior year, we were at fifty five point six four percent of the budget versus the prior year at fifty six point oh six. I made a note here because I know there's questions out there about how our current situation is going to impact current year expenditures. And so we're monitoring things like utilities, materials, building budget. We have a, an agenda item this evening on bus contract. Those things that aren't currently happening, questions about how that will impact the budget. And we don't have a projection on the total amount, but that's something that we're taking a look at as some of those bills and invoices come in. For example, on the utilities to see where we are, to understand where we may finish the year, knowing the current situation.
Any other questions?
I just had one question. I think it's been answered in a previous meeting, but in looking at the overtime, it's at a hundred seventy-two percent FYTD. That still means, my, according to my understanding, the departments are still within their budget with that overtime. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Then I'm looking for, if there's no other question, then I'm looking for a motion to approve.
A motion to approve checks in the amount of one million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars, seventy-five cents. Disbursements in the amount of three million, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven, twenty-four cents for a total of four million, eight hundred and forty-six dollars, nine hundred nine hundred and fourteen dollars, ninety-nine cents. As outlined in agenda item three point two.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion, a second to approve checks and disbursements as outlined in agenda item three point two. Any further discussion? All right. Then I call for a roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am yes, motion carries. Um, so moving on with the agenda on a new business, uh, we are scheduled to approve, uh, staff reemployment under personnel. Uh, so this is reemployment of the staff for the upcoming two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Uh, right now, the way, uh, it is, is that we are not setting a dollar amount. I, I guess, the dollar, we're, we're reemploying them at the same dollar amount that they currently have in their salary. Um, you know, so that is what we are scheduled to approve tonight. And you see then that there are some staff that are full-time. Uh, but we also have some staff that, uh, will be a part-time appointment. So Julie, I don't know if there's anything more that you want to share at this time?
No, I was just going to reiterate exactly that, that we're recalling them at their current two thousand nineteen, twenty salary amount. Um, the other change is that the board normally will sign the paper contracts tonight. Um, but I have prepared those electronically and plan to, upon approval, uh, would release those to staff to be, uh, managed and signed electronically as well.
I think it's important to note that, uh, we have not laid off any staff, but we do have several vacant positions. So as we talk about in better budgets, um, there is space, um, to address that. So as, from a budget perspective, we have, um, maintained this year's salary structure. Um, maintain this level on this year's salary structure, as I mentioned in communications, and we do have open positions.
All right, any other questions?
So I said, if they're electronic, we are not signing all of them this time around. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, the, the only question that I have, um, for administration has to do with the, the part-time staff. Are any of these, I'll say, non-voluntary, part-time that we should be aware of where they may impact a program? Um, and what I mean by that is to, in the past, we've had, because of enrollment or because of the number of students that um, are, um, registered for class. We have had to reduce the number of FTEs for a specific program or for a specific class at the secondary level. And, and what some, we sometimes have to see is that, uh, we then see turnover at that level. So, so I guess, is there anything that we should be, is there anything that we should be aware of that, um, could potentially happen because of a non-voluntary reduction?
Um, there was only one non-voluntary reduction this year, um, which was for a FIED position based on our adaptive FIED needs. So, um, that was a reduction with the possibility to increase that FTE once our needs for adaptive physical education are known. Um, that was the only non-voluntary reduction. Some of the other adjustments in high school enrollments and FTE um, were voluntary and requested by the staff member with the reductions that we made there.
Okay.
And that was really just a reallocation of FTE between staff members or between departments, um, as opposed to a reduction.
Okay, so we don't anticipate any of these reductions impacting how we offer a class or having to then go back out, um, to re, to rehire someone that may be looking for a full-time position. Okay.
I, I don't anticipate that at this point. Um, it, it will issue the teacher contracts and see how they get returned, but there were not involuntary reductions, um, that you are referencing from prior years.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Uh, all right, so then we are, um, scheduled to approve the, the personnel contracts. And again, this is for our certified staff, our teaching staff. We take action at a later time for administration as well as for, um, non-certified staff like, like, uh, administrative assistants or paraprofessionals and things like that. So this is just the reemployment of person, of certified staff. So I'm looking for a motion to approve. Noel, I see your lips moving, but, uh, you're on mute.
Sorry. Uh, motion to approve agenda item, um, five point one, uh, personnel, approval of personnel contract.
All right, is there a second? There's a couple of seconds. All right, any further discussion? All right, then I call for a roll call vote. Ki- uh, Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am yes, uh, motion approves. Uh, the next item on the agenda are policies. So these are policies that we, um, heard at our last board meeting. They're coming back for a second reading for us to approve. Uh, so, uh, some of these have had some, uh, changes and, and, uh, you're seeing them for a second time now tonight. Kim, anything more about these, uh, two policies that we're hearing for the second, um, second reading?
No, there were minimal, uh, I'm not sure that all, both of them had changes. I don't think that there was a change to one seventy-two. So, um, there were no substantive changes between, um, the first reading and now, so that you should be set to approve.
All right, any discussion? Otherwise I look for a motion to approve.
I just wanted to call out and, uh, also thank for some of the, thank the community members that shared some feedback on these as well. You know, I think that's always important when people do have thoughts or see something, uh, to share that. And I think some of those were incorporated in our policies, um, you know, through some minor changes, um, as we're presenting them today that you can see in the red and the bold.
All right. All right, then I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve, um, agenda item four, five point two, which are policies number one seventy-two and four eleven rule.
Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve policies one seventy-two, the special board meetings and four eleven rule for student discrimination and harassment complete procedure. Any further discussion?
There was one thing I mentioned to, uh, Kim earlier today. I was trying to find it in here. I think it was in the rule. Um, or maybe not the rule, um, just the wording that we had. Um, I was thinking it, it maybe needs, needs to be the same in both statements. It had to do with, um, different groups. Um, let me see if I can find it. I'm not seeing it now. Um, it just, it just was in the way the wording was with like, um, based off of race, ethnicity, religion. And I, I saw that it was worded a little, like, the terms were, uh, in different order on, on the two points. But I can't figure out where it is right now.
Kathy, I think that's in four eleven point two, which we have for information only later in the agenda.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Okay. All right, so there's motion and a second. Any further discussion? Then I'll call for a roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am yes, both these policies approve, uh, are, are approved. Then, um, next item that we're taking action on tonight, and Jonathan alluded to it a little bit earlier, is the, the busing contract with First Student. And, uh, administration is bringing forward an amendment to our contract, um, to, to account for wh- what's currently happening. Um, so Jonathan, uh, is there anything that you'd like to update or, or share with us about, uh, the busing contract amendment?
Yeah, so we're in year four of a five-year contract, um, for busing with First Student. And, um, our contract that we have right now doesn't speak specifically to the situation that we're in. Um, to detail our required payment amount. And so we've been working with our attorneys at Von Bresen to talk through what language, um, could look like. Um, in regards to the situation, we've been working specifically with our counterparts as part of our co-op. Um, so when we signed this agreement, it was in partnership with Greenfield, Whitnall and Franklin. And that partnership, I believe, has been going on for fourteen years now, um, with those other three districts. And so we've discussed that in terms of how we're going to respond to this situation, because we all have similar contract language. We've also been looking at how school districts across the area and region have been handling this. Um, because most of them are in a similar situation. Our goal's been to find a solution, um, that will ensure continued transportation for our students as soon as, um, we're back up and running. And, and we all hope that that, that day is going to come, um, sooner rather than later. Um, and that we can, uh, get back to, um, a, a, a new normal for our students. Um, some of the things that First Student has outlined in terms of ongoing costs while we're shut down is the cost of, uh, maintaining buses, insurance, facility costs, maintenance, labor and parts, administrative labor and recruiting costs. Um, knowing that this situation continues to be somewhat unpredictable. Um, and what we may be expected to do, um, we know that ongoing planning throughout summer is going to be important for us to continue to engage in. And we want to make sure that we've got, um, the services in place that will be going, um, in the fall. So we came to a proposal, um, that verbally, um, First Student has agreed to at fifty percent of the remaining um, contract, uh, amount for the period of, um, uh, April sixth through the end of the school year. And that came to twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. And so the savings over what we anticipated paying, what we had budgeted, um, for this year would be that same amount. So about twenty-two thousand dollars. So we would, um, I would recommend that the board approve, um, this, uh, amendment um, with that reduction at fifty percent, so that we can continue the partnership forward and ensure that we'll be ready to go in the fall. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? So this is an amendment to our existing contract, as Jonathan said. It's a multi-year contract with, um, three other districts. And, and given that we are no longer using busing services, we are proposing, administration is proposing this amendment where we would then, um, reduce the, the, the remainder amount of the contract by fifty percent.
Jonathan, for the fall, if we find ourselves doing the same thing where we're going to be online because of the COVID, is there talk with First Student's, uh, buses? Or have they said anything about reducing it again if this should happen?
So we would be coming to agreement for the, the contract that if there were, uh, health emergency or, um, uh, declaration regarding a pandemic that we were required to shut down, that type of situation would trigger this fifty percent payment so that we could continue to have busing ready to go. It would not apply to situations like a snow day. So what's happened in past is that those days just aren't charged. Um, but it would apply to the situation. So we're kind of, we're coming to agreement on what the expectation would be going forward if we need to keep contracted services ready, but it's for indefinite period of time. Uh, but our hope is, is that we won't, won't have that in September.
Thank you.
What happened? What would happen if, um, the other districts in this consortium don't agree upon this? It, it does, you know, how, how does that potentially impact us? Are we separated enough, you know, for our school amount that? Um, I, I don't, I understand, understand exactly how the contract is. Is like, is it a joint contract with these other districts? Or is it, um, kind of an agreement and then our, our payment and terms and other things are separated so that we're kind of negotiating separately?
We're agreeing, um, together to have services so that we can lock in certain um, aspects of the contract, like the fee increases from year to year. We sign individually. And so it's been important, as we've discussed this, that we've discussed and negotiated as a group. Um, each of the four districts and their boards will have to take action on this. Um, so what we've discussed so far is that we would move forward with the recommendation for each of the four to do the same thing. Um, but the, the other three districts will have to take action, um, on that. In terms of what that will mean for us if we act and others don't, uh, there's language that's being written in that these dollars are intended to ensure that they're investing in, um, the, the infrastructure, the terminal that we have in Mesquite to make sure that that continues to be up and running. Um, and our goal is to con- continue to work with our consortium counterparts that they, um, work to follow through on what's been discussed, so that we know those revenues are there and that that, uh, that terminal will be up and running in the fall. Um, I can't, yeah, I can't speak specifically to the, what the boards will do with action. But what we've discussed as a group is that this would be our recommendation. Um, it would have a consistent recommendation for all four districts.
Okay. And then you, in your notes and kind of as you reiterated, what we're seeing is um, typically negotiating continued payments in the fifty to seventy-five percent range. So this is obviously towards the bottom end of that range from what you're seeing in other districts. And it allows us, like you said, the, to main, to make sure that we're continuing to have access to the buses that we obviously rely on to get our students to and from school. Um, okay.
Any other questions?
When, when did you say the agreement is up with them? Is it the end of the next year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two?
Two thousand twenty-one, so the end of next school year. Next year will be our fifth year, um, of the agreement.
Okay. And has, um, do we feel pretty confident that they will accept our terms? Have we talked uh, with our provider on that?
What's being proposed tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, verbally, we have an agreement that they would accept that at fifty percent. And that would be sufficient to keep, um, the systems in order for the summer.
First student, okay.
All right, a- any other questions then? All right, um, then if there are no other questions, we are, um, posted to, uh, approve this amendment tonight. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the First Student Busing Contract Amendment.
I make a motion to approve the First Student Busing Contract Amendment as outlined in agenda item five point three.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the First Student Busing Contract Amendment. Any further discussion? Can I call for a roll call vote? Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am yes, motion carries. Uh, then next on the agenda, we're, um, scheduled to hear, uh, or, um, a policy update. So these are three policies that, uh, were shared previously. And then I think, um, the board had some feedback on it. And then I think as Kim mentioned, and I think as Thor alluded to it as well, is that there are some additional feedback, um, on these, uh, policies. So, uh, the, the changes were significant enough that we are bringing these back for a, a second first reading. So, uh, this is, these, this is considered a first reading for them. I will have an opportunity to review them and then bring these back for approval at our next board meeting. So, Kim, anything that you'd like to highlight, um, that is going to be reflected?
Yeah, so first of all, four eleven point two, the bullying and hate speech policy. Um, there are two areas that were updated, um, the first being, um, at the last board meeting, the board had wanted to add information on education and training. Um, and we got some sample language and added that. It is, uh, near the end of the policy on page. Um, it's just that, three?
Three.
Three, um, around education. The second thing is, um, there's an addition of a recording requirement that we would report to segregated data on bullying and hate speech to the board, which is in alignment with, um, state requirements. So to state that in policy was important. Um, then the welcoming diversity policy team, this is one of the goals within that team. On the action plan is to take a look at this. And so as we looked at hate speech being a form of bullying, there was, uh, a recommendation, a suggestion that we expand it to be more than just name-calling, but to include language, behavior and symbols. So that is what you see on the first page, uh, in the third paragraph. So those were the the changes to this. Then there's some others where for consistency, we had changed bullying and hate speech, but in other spaces, we had just left bullying. So to make it consistent, it reads bullying or hate speech throughout the policy.
All right, and Kathy, earlier on, you had commented about, you know, listing the the various attributes. Is this the policy that you're referring to? I just want to make sure that we touch upon that.
Yeah, I believe so. I'm I'm having trouble scrolling through it right now. I don't remember which part it was in.
I wonder if it was the, is it on page one where it says definition? And then underneath definition, it has the hate speech called on in bold section. So on the bottom of those two paragraphs, back to back, they're in different orders.
So so I just noticed that they were in different order, and I didn't know if that was a big ticket item or not. There was one additional one, I think, in the second. But I just wanted to make sure they were aligned with each other.
Yeah, it's okay. So if administration, Kim, if you could take a look at that and make sure that they are aligned and and consistent. But you're right, Kathy, just looking at, I think we call out age in the first definition, but we don't call out age in the second paragraph.
And I wonder if that ties into a form. Is there hate speech around age? And maybe there isn't, it's my ignorance versus bullying. Because there is also the political affiliation, which I think isn't necessarily a form of bullying. But there's definitely a hate speech component that aligns with that. So maybe it is, that's a good good question, you know, just to make sure and validate that we didn't inadvertently change something there.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments about about this policy? And then, Kim, like you said, at our last board meeting, we we talked specifically about education and training and reporting. So glad to see that those were both added. So thank you. All right, then, the next item that is being reviewed tonight then is policy eight eight two one relations with police authorities and and the SRO.
There is a minor change to this. And we probably could have approved it tonight with the mind with the level of change. But considering the rule has a more substantive revision, we thought we'd take them together. And he under number one, it originally read and reads on the MOU as approved both the real and perceived safety of the schools across the district. And if the discussion was is that really there, it's about protecting the safety of our students. And so even though it's not in the MOU, I think it's important to have in this policy that our top priority in engaging police officers in our schools is around student safety.
All right, any questions about that policy? Otherwise, we'll go on to the the rule that's tied to the policy. So the rule kind kind of walks through how the policy will be applied. So here there's some additional highlights and changes. So Kim, if you might talk about that.
Yes, there was, in some places, it was identified that police would be contacted around criminal criminal offense or an ordinance violation, alleged criminal offense or ordinance violation. But in other places, that was not said. So for consistency, you'll see alleged offense or alleged criminal activity or ordinance violation in several spots. And then in this policy, there were several other area or rule, there was several other areas. Under four D around in school referrals, there was a desire at the policy meeting before the first reading, the last first reading to change that to contact. The word contact was changed in one spot, but not in another spot. So you can see and read that the word contact was changed there. And under four E, there was a request to annually document and report all police referrals under this section of the policy, including demographic information for the student. So like in the bullying and hate speech policy, there's a requirement for reporting. There's an added requirement for reporting here. And finally, there was discussion around a complaint per complaint option. So this complaint procedure, if there is a use of this procedural question about this, the policy will shows who can be contacted and how they can ask questions if they're concerned that something wasn't addressed appropriately or in alignment with policy.
Can you help me understand that? So I I think I understand it, but so this would be a complaint with the district and whether or not the district followed its own policy in relation to working with the the school resource officer.
Correct. And so the initial complaint would come to the superintendent of schools. There would be an investigation if they were not satisfied with that, they would, they could file a discrimination complaint per four eleven rule, which we approved tonight.
And if if this is a complaint with our school resource officer and how that person handled the situation, would that come to the schools there or would that go to the the chief of police?
That would go to the police department. So this is very clear in the complaint procedure if any person believes that the district or any part of the school organization has inadequately applied the principles or regulations of this policy.
So that's what that lead in sentence isn't is intended to differentiate, okay?
So if there is a concern about how a school district employee applied the policy, it would come superintendent. And then if not satisfied with the response from the superintendent, they could file a discrimination and harassment complaint.
Okay. All right, so again, these are coming back as first readings because of the the amount of changes. Any other questions or comments from from the board?
There was one other point of discussion in around this policy, and that was around in two D where students would be offered an opportunity to contact a trusted adult. The question was around whether or not we should in policy require the police officer to wait until the trusted adult could arrive and participate in the interview if if the trusted adult and the student wanted the trusted adult to come to the school. While there may be times when they are able to accommodate that, there may be other times when the trusted adult is unable to come at all. And then to to not allow the police to continue with an investigation of a criminal offense that where evidence could be lost would be problematic. The other thing is that in talking with the police chief, when we originally looked at this policy, there was talk about contacting a trusted adult. And they said that if the school district chose to do that, they would wait for that contact. This is for an in-school referral, but they would not necessarily be able to wait for someone to come to school. There was discussion, and I don't think this is the preferred method, because the school district can regulate how police interview students within the school building. If that were required, that the police would have the ability to transport this student to the police station for interview because the school district does not control how they interview at the police station. And so the concern that that might be a possibility and could more significantly traumatize a student by being taken to the police station. It is not something that I would recommend including in the policy. While we would like to make sure that we have that the student is supported and that that it is handled appropriately, we do want to work in cooperation with the police department to make sure that we don't further traumatize students by setting up a policy that would put us in conflict with the police department. If that makes sense.
Kim, it was also mentioned in the group that we were with the policy surrounding the body cameras. And in my discussion with the police chief and in discussing with you, that is really a village police policy that would not fall under our policy, is that correct?
Yes, and in this policy, it says that the body cameras may be used and that it would be in alignment with department policy. So when, so we cannot, based on this policy, we're saying that the body cam footage is a department policy, not one that the school district would enforce. And that we would request that they turn on their body cameras when they're doing interviews in the school. But that we can't put it in our policy dictating and demanding that they must.
Right. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments about this policy? All right, so then, Kim, we will be bringing back these three policies and rules that we're seeing then for a second reading at our next board meeting. And I think the only ask was to take a look at the the wording to make sure that we are inclusive of all attributes that we want to be addressed.
Correct, and four eleven point two.
All right, thank you. And I think this is a good example of the outcome from our welcoming diversity steering committee and the the policy strand that came out of that group and and continue in the this board's commitment to continuing to look at equity in our policies. So I I think this is a good example of our commitment to continuing that that conversation. So thank you, Kim, and thank you, Thor and Noel, Thor and Kathy as part of the committee policy committee.
And I do pass my torch on to Noel, but I'll still stay actively involved.
No, absolutely. We, it's a role for everyone. All right, so next item on the agenda that we're hearing tonight, the equity agreements and update. So agenda of six point two is a report that Sarah Derrick and Tracy Flader, who are both principals at our elementary schools, but have been during Kim's appointment, have been filling in at an interim basis with the director of curriculum. So this report is presented by them to Kim. And Kim, if you want to just kind of highlight the the areas there.
Yes.
And welcome, Tracy and Sarah. You just appeared in our Zoom meeting.
This is work that I have been committed to over the last four years, beginning work this space around two thousand sixteen. And I have reluctantly shared responsibilities for equity. Actually, I shouldn't say reluctantly, I reluctantly turned over control. But I'm glad that more people are involved in this work and continue to be involved in this work. And I think that Tracy and Sarah have done a nice job of highlighting and outlining the work that we're doing to date and our next steps in the process. So I will turn it over to them. Tracy and Sarah, you have the ability to share your screen so that you can present.
Okay. Oh, good evening, everyone. And as Joe introduced us already, I am Tracy Flader, principal of Highland View and interim co-director of instruction.
And I'm Sarah Derrick, principal at Canterbury Elementary and interim co-director of instruction. Before we move into the equity agreements presentation tonight, I would like to acknowledge and address the comments made by Shanice Knox and Dee Marriott at the beginning of this school board meeting. I've thought and reflected a lot over the past year and a half about the incidents from September of two thousand eighteen. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly apologize for the trauma that my actions caused Shanice. I've done a lot of personal and professional learning over the last year and a half. And as I continue to grow and learn on my equity journey, I believe the situation from two thousand eighteen could have been handled differently. To continue to repair the harm, I will be reaching out to Shanice and Dee to set up a phone call or Zoom meeting, whatever works best, to open the lines of communication. I really would like us to be able to work together to continue our equity work within this district. Continuing with our equity presentation, Tracy and I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to present to the school board tonight. We are in a unique situation with our current reality. Even during a pandemic and safer at home, our equity work cannot stop. This has been evident with many of our situations our students, their families and our staff are currently experiencing. We continue to move forward in our equity work and are excited to present the equity agreements to the school board and our community this evening. Equity is neither optional nor negotiable. This is who we are as a school, and these are the values to which we will be held accountable. We ask that you keep this quote in your mind as we move through this presentation as it relates directly to our equity vision. In Greendale Schools, equity means closing the gap so that our demographic indicators like race, language, ethnicity, religion, gender, disability and family poverty do not predict one success while improving outcomes for all. In order to close these gaps, we must target improvements for those most burdened by inequities. We must move beyond services to target policies and practices that eliminate institutional inequities. Over the course of the next few slides, I'm going to share our demographic, some demographic. Let me start over. Over the course of the next few slides, I will share the facets of our demographic diversity. As we continue to ensure equitable outcomes for all students, it's important to be aware of our demographics because these are the students that make up our community of learners. To give us some perspective, I compared our current data to the two thousand four, two thousand five school year, so about fifteen years ago. Greendale continues to become more racially diverse. Over the past fifteen years, we've experienced the largest change with our students that identify as Hispanic and white. Our students that identify as Hispanic have doubled over the past fifteen years to approximately twelve percent of our students. And our students that identify as as white have decreased by approximately fourteen percent in the last fifteen years. While we present information on all aspects of equity, which includes race, English language status, socioeconomic status and students with disabilities that are encompassed in the forthcoming equity agreements, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that there is much work to be done in the area of race. We continue to educate our staff and students and will continue to grow through discomfort. We're not going to wait for our students or staff to be completely comfortable to talk about race because there's never going to be a time that everybody is comfortable or ready. We will continue to learn and grow, and we are going to lean into that discomfort through our journey. Our English language proficiency is measured for all students whose family identify a second language in the home now or during a child's language development. Annually, students identified as English language learners participate in the access testing as required by the state of Wisconsin. Students who score beginning pre-production to advanced intermediate continue to be offered English language support services within their learning environment. Once a student reaches an advanced level of proficiency in English, he or she is monitored and after a period of time is determined to no longer need support. Students labeled formerly in the graph are students who received English language support in the past. Fifteen years ago, two point three percent of Greendale students received English language services. Over the past fifteen years, we've seen a ten percent increase in that demographic area. Students receiving free or reduced lunch meet the maximum income eligibility criteria, which is considered below the poverty line by the National School Lunch Program. Fifteen years ago, approximately twelve percent of students in Greendale received free or reduced lunch. We have seen an almost fifteen percent increase in this area over the past fifteen years. And then the last facet of our demographic diversity is our students with disabilities. In the two thousand four, two thousand five school year, approximately ten point three percent of our students had a disability. And we've seen a three percent increase in that over the past fifteen years.
So in serving all of our students, our learning and work with the Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity, or ICS model, began in July of two thousand sixteen. The ICS model was developed by Dr. Elise Fertura and Dr. Colleen Kapper and is built upon forty five years of equity research. It is a proactive, assets-based framework, and it aligns with our work to serve all students as it addresses racial inequities and an entire range of inequities across race, ethnicity, social class, ability, gender, sexual gender identity and their intersections. One of the many strengths of the ICS model is the emphasis that it places on the different facets of equity. By using using an equity filter in our decision-making process, we ensure equitable outcomes for all. The ICS for Equity Model consists of four cornerstones. Cornerstone 1 focuses on equity. Cornerstone 2, aligning students and staff. Cornerstone 3, transforming teaching and learning. And cornerstone 4, leveraging funding and policy. Working fully through each of these cornerstones is vital to achieving lasting success and change. It is not work that can be done quickly. It is work that challenges its learners and causes discomfort. It shifts beliefs and encourages multiple perspectives. As leaders in our equity work, our Greendale administrators, along with our district and building equity teams, are champions of this work. We're leaning into the discomfort and guiding our staff along our journey. Over the past two years, our equity teams and staff have spent significant time focusing on cornerstone 1. This cornerstone and its modules are the foundation upon which our equity work is set. Learning has been focused on marginalized populations, personal bias and identity, how to speak up against prejudice, bias, and stereotypes, intent versus impact, and access to culturally responsive materials. In addition, all buildings have done equity audits around achievement and behavioral data. And we are here today to discuss in more detail the development of our Greendale Equity Agreements. Cornerstone 1 and the learning and change within it are integral to our equity work. It is important to note that while our learning and practice moves forward past cornerstone 1, this cornerstone is not completed or checked off in any manner. Our learning around marginalization, the development of our identities, and our understanding of how to stop and address conscious and unconscious bias continue to expand and deepen. We implement and continue to develop our learning and knowledge from cornerstone 1, and we continue to move forward by making shifts in our practice. Cornerstones 2, 3, and 4 of the ICS model guide us as we make those shifts. It is also important to note that our learning and work within the cornerstones is not always linear. To this point, the majority of our work and learning have been in cornerstones 1 and 2. We learn, we make shifts, and then we implement our learning through practices that are filtered through an equitable and culturally responsive lens. In conjunction, we work to leverage policy and funding through our work with you, the school board, the Greendale Welcomes Diversity Committees and Action Plan, and our district and building equity teams. Continuing our work with the ICS model and its focus on an assets-based program, our district has created a set of equity agreements to guide our instructional and programming decisions.
As our learning and work continues to involve in our district and building equity teams, we initially refer to our statements as non-negotiables. As we continue to grow in our practice, the decision has been made to change the term non-negotiables to agreements. They work to hold us accountable and help frame what is expected. The term agreements is framed in a positive growth mindset and eliminates deficit-based language. This is in tune with our equity work and further facilitates our equity work. Through our ongoing learning, we know that equity agreements are vital as they hold our district accountable to our continued commitments to equity. We've highlighted the following reasons as some of the most important, and these examples come from the ICS for Equity Model. Our Greendale Equity Agreements are vital because we know that schools have a longstanding process of separating students into categories and serving students separately. We know that our staff does not represent the diversity of our, sorry, I'm going to change this just a little bit. My screen is very tiny on the one I'm reading off of. We know that our staff does not represent the diversity of our student population. We know that all people have unconscious bias that may inadvertently impact our perspective in classifying students. And we know that specific races, students from low-income homes, students labeled as English learners, and students with disabilities are disproportionately represented in pull-out separated programs. Equity agreements provide clear and succinct verbiage that builds a common language and understanding across our system. We believe it is important to not only have a shared language, but shared experiences to shape our learning, just like when all staff experienced the same learning activities from Reggie Jackson and Fran Kaplan in the high school multipurpose room. Equity agreements identify key attributes of our district. These agreements help to drill down to what we really want to be as a district. Equity agreements focus our system and serve as a guide for ongoing decisions to serve all of our students and remove barriers for equitable outcomes. Equity agreements provide us a lens to use with all of our decision-making. Drafts of all 10 statements were shared with the district equity team through a gallery walk process. Team members placed a green or red dot on each statement to indicate their support of the agreements, green, or their hesitation around it, red. In addition, team members reflected on each statement through three questions. What resonates with you? What gives you pause? And what suggestions do you have to improve or modify to best represent what we can support? Additional conversation based on the gallery walk feedback occurred with the district equity team. Reflective comments from the previous meeting were shared for each statement and used to elicit further conversation and revisions to the agreements. Finalization of the agreements was brought to the district equity team, and additional revisions were made for clarity and common language.
Prior to our board presentation, the equity agreements were also shared with all Greendale School's staff and representatives of the Greendale Welcomes Diversity Policy Committee. Through this sharing, suggestions have been made by some that the agreements could use stronger language, such as fighting against inequality, commitment to combat bias in an ongoing way, protecting marginalized students, and a commitment to confronting racism.
The district equity team has reflected on these choices and are bringing forth a set of agreements to guide future decisions for programming, instruction, and policy that achieve true equity for students in Greendale. Equity efforts within our district are ongoing, and we continue to hear and value all voices in our school community. While we know these agreements are on your computer screens, Tracy and I believe it's important to read these agreements aloud. It is the right of each child and family to feel welcome and a part of our community. Number 2, we are responsible for providing an equitable education for all students in our schools. Number 3, we share responsibility for student success and actively support students' social, emotional growth. Number 4, educational teams are intentionally designed to support collaborative planning for instruction and student learning. Number 5, education teams design instruction for all learners the first time a concept is taught.
Number 6, curriculum and instruction is rigorous for all learners. Number 7, curriculum and instruction is culturally relevant to reflect diversity. Number 8, the learning environment is designed with the flexibility to meet the needs of all learners. Number 9, students are proportionally represented in all environments. And 10, all district policies, procedures, and funding are aligned with all the above equity agreements.
In partnership with our community members, we will explore additional suggestions and ideas for incorporation into the agreements as there are stakeholders who feel that stronger terminology around anti-racist language policy should be included in the agreements. These additional ideas focusing on anti-racist language and marginalized student populations are important to our equity work and align most appropriately with school board policy and resolutions, while the equity agreements focus on equality through instruction and programming.
Community members have also suggested the following agreements. Educational equity is an intentional distribution of district resources amongst schools, students, and staff based on what each needs to achieve universal equity goals. Students shall graduate ready to succeed in a diverse local, national, and global community and recruit, employ, support, and retain diverse and culturally competent administrative, instructional, and support personnel. We hear our community partners and value their input. As we continue our equity journey, the Director of Equity and Instruction will focus on working with all stakeholders to create an equity document that includes goals that align with the district mission, vision, and strategic priorities, strategies that address policy and procedure, and agreements that address instruction and programming. A Woodland Conference District that has made great strides in terms of equity and has created an Equity for Excellence Plan and Policy is Brown Deer. An overarching document such as this would allow for us to include additional input shared by district and community members and match them to the area where they best fit within our work in the district, whether that be policy, procedure, instruction, programming, to name a few. In addition, equitable and culturally responsive practices will be a focus of the district's next strategic plan. Additional work will be done to compile the staff feedback from the equity agreements reflection that staff took as part of their professional development day on April 13th. This information will help frame future professional development opportunities for the coming school year and beyond. This feedback is incredibly valuable as providing focused professional development in the areas in which staff have specifically indicated need will ensure that we increase their capacity and ownership. Throughout the month of June, over 40 staff members will advance their learning by participating in one of two different ICS institutes, one focusing on cornerstones 1 and 2, and one focusing on cornerstone 3. In addition, summer professional development opportunities will be offered in the areas of trauma-informed care, restorative practices, psychological first aid, executive functioning, assistive technology, multiple entry points for instruction, and co-planning to co-serve. We are also working with Ubuntu around providing professional development focused on learning and building relationships through restorative and social dignity. As we conclude our presentation, it is important to remember that as our population expands and we see increased diversity in race, English language proficiency, students with disabilities, and economic status, our institutions need to change as well. Through our continued work with the ICS model, our building and district equity teams, and our partnership with our community, we will continue to move forward to ensure equitable outcomes for all students. On behalf of Sarah and myself, we want to thank you for your time this evening, and at this time, we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
I want to thank Sarah and Tracy for their thorough report and straightforward language in addressing equity in our schools.
Yeah, I would agree. So thank you very much, both you for your presentation and for the the research and the reflection that's happened, as well as for the engagement with the community as well. So any questions, comments, perspectives that the board would like to share or ask of the administration at this time?
Yeah. First of all, thank you both Tracy and Sarah for the report. It was excellent. You've put a lot of thought into it, and you're doing a great job, and I appreciate the report. I do have a question, just to clarify. As part of your work, will, with the curriculum, in my understanding, that some of that will start to include diversity within the subjects of like social studies and English and things like that? Am I correct on that?
Yes, in 2018, the board adopted a social studies curriculum that included some very important aspects of diverse historical narratives. So, for example, as you look at our eighth grade curriculum, when we talk about the New Deal, that includes narratives around not only who was included in the founding of Greendale, but who was excluded and why they were excluded, and thinking about that perspective. And you see that trend throughout our social studies curriculum as it was part of the focus, and we were in a learning phase in the ICS framework at the time that that 2018 curriculum was approved and adopted. So I know that at the beginning of the meeting, one of the comments was requesting an African-American Studies class. And I agree that it is important to address the history of African-Americans and all of our racial and ethnic populations, as well as our other groups that may have traditionally been not part of the mainstream narrative. But I think it should be for everyone, not in an optional social studies class at the senior level. So we could do additional work to continue to increase the representation so that students see themselves in the curriculum. And Tracy and Sarah have taken the lead on that this year in partnership with Carrie as another elementary school principal as they're looking at the texts that are available for students in the reading and language arts curriculum at the elementary level. So they went through in one of their professional development sessions this year and analyzed what stories and texts they used to teach students reading skills and identified what was the racial distribution, what was the ethnic stories that were being told, whose perspective and whose narratives were being shared, and found that we had some gaps. And so what you're also seeing is that the, there is an effort and work being done at the elementary level to diversify the texts that we are reading not only as anchor texts, which are the stories that are shared with all students to teach a skill, but also to diversify the collection of book clubs and the choices students have for independent reading to ensure that the students see themselves, and more importantly, our students who identify as white see heroes and heroines and stories that are African-American, Latinx, and of other racial and ethnic backgrounds. And that's important for them to see all narratives. So yes, to answer your question, that is important, and that's work that we're going to need to continue to do. Tracy and Sarah, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I was going to add in the work we've done around culturally responsive texts. We've actually done two different professional developments around that now and are working on securing funds and have written grants. The Greendale Education Foundation actually just granted each of our schools grant money to purchase materials. So we are really moving forward with that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. What other questions does the board have or comments that the board wants to share?
I have two questions. Sure, thank you very much, Tracy and Sarah, for your very thorough report. And I appreciate the asset-based language of agreement instead of the non-negotiable. So I really like that. My question, my first question is, you said that there were suggestions from community members and some of the language. Will there be any next steps with those suggestions being added to the agreement?
Yes. Yes, so we will bring it back, and it'll be something that the Director for Equity and Instruction will refine and develop and take back to our equity team around what changes need to be made, in addition to discussions around some of the anti-racist, anti-racism resolution language that may need to come forward to the board in addition to these equity agreements.
When we look at models of, you know, other districts and how they're writing their agreements, like I mentioned Brown Deer in our presentation. They had three different sections, and some of those suggestions by community members may fit really well within some, if you look at goals for the district or strategies that the district is using, especially when it comes to policy or procedure, some of those fit really well within those areas. So that's something that I think we need to explore more as a district and where those can fit best.
Thank you. And my other question was, in the beginning of the presentation, when you had the charge with the different races, there was one that was unknown, and I was just wondering why that one, unknown?
Not every, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but not everybody has to choose, right? Can they, some might choose not to identify. Yeah, sometimes. Can you go back to that slide? I just want to see how many unknowns we have. It's usually very small and gets adjusted later, but sometimes our newest students don't always have a race identified. How many are there?
34.
So that's a pretty significant number. Oh, I know why we don't have a known race. There are students who attend other districts and come into Greendale for a single class, so those are from There are students who attend other districts and come into Greendale for a single class. So those are from feeder districts. So for example, if we have a consortium agreement for students to take the medical terminology class, but they reside in another district, then that would be the case. We have students that we serve through advanced math programming that come into our district for a single class. Their race is listed as unknown. So those thirty-four students are students who either through consortium agreements or part-time open enrollment agreements come into our school for one or two classes per day. And therefore, they're not listed in the Greendale School's demographic information. That's why they're unknown.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Kim.
Sure.
And Kim Ametzic, can you just just spend two minutes? I just want to make sure that everyone understands the difference between the welcoming diversity committee, which Greendale Schools is part of, and then the equity team, which is an internal team that Greendale School uses to kind of internalize and and take a look and understand how things are being implemented.
Right. So during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, the district established a group of staff members, paraprofessionals, teachers, people services staff to begin investigating and understanding where we were at with in regards to our equity journey. So how are we doing? Do we have disparities in our data? Do we have differences among how students perform based on demographic indicators? And of course we do. And we began to address that work. That was through the I C S model and we did some work in Cornerstone one, but it only involved about fifteen to twenty staff members. As we look to advance and ensure that all staff members are moving along this journey, in the eighteen nineteen school year, we identified teams of staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, et cetera, administrators at each building who come together as a team. And those team members are all listed in the report that was included with the board packet by and drafted by Sarah and Tracy. So there are about fifty members of that team, but they all are employees of the district. The welcoming diversity action plan, policy team and other teams are all community members who can raise their hand and say, I would like to share and be part of this work and offer suggestions and recommendations. And so I share the goal to on the welcoming diversity action plan is around policies and procedures. There is some language in there about establishing equity non-negotiables. There was some language in there that that was not consistent with the language that we're using in the district. And so that's part of the clarification that we have around the equity agreements being part of a larger picture of equity non-negotiables or equity resolutions within the district. Does that help?
Yeah, that that helps clarify things. So thank you very much. Any any other comments or questions from the board members?
Oh, I have a couple of quick questions that kind of build off of two questions that already were asked. And then one clarification is to make sure I'm not going crazy, but first, I had a comment written down that the numbers didn't add up to the twenty-seven hundred, but they do now. So maybe I don't know if it was updated, but.
That was all me, Thor. I had a problem. So I'm sorry. I left out Highland View and College Park initially. So thank you. I fixed that. So I'm sorry about that. It definitely did change. I was missing two schools for a technical glitch.
Okay, good. I was, thank you for checking my sanity. I appreciate, appreciate that. I'm like looking here. I'm like, why did I write this down? I'm, that seemed to add up. My my two questions, one was around the community comments and, you know, there's a statement right on the bottom of of page twelve, where you list the agreements and kind of talks about suggestions and continuing to garner some feedback from the community. And I think that's a fantastic idea. And I think the more open we can get in getting some input, you know, I realize that we, this has been wrestled with within the team and you even walked through some of the gallery walks of the things that you did to kind of narrow this down. And so I don't want to detract from what you've already done, but I think it would be really helpful to open that up for some suggestions from the public around these different agreements to almost go through a similar exercise and provide that feedback and insight. So that's one. I don't know if that's a comment or a desire. And then the other one is around the committees themselves. So when I was, when I was going through, I highlighted something around the student engagement. And then I I didn't see any students engaged in the equity teams. But I think that could be a really strong voice to have as part of that equity team. And I was also, you know, I don't know if this is, if it makes sense or not, but for some reason I was assuming the equity team in the high school would be as large or larger than the other schools, just based upon the enrollments. And it was actually the smallest team and obviously you don't, you know, quantity and quality, I don't want, you know, don't know what that what that equals or means, but just kind of curious, your thoughts, reactions as it sits into the students and then also, you know, does it, will these teams continue to grow? Are these really the drivers? And there's other people that are connected into it. I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah. So there's a student equity team at the high school that is composed of just students. And it's a sizable team and they've been doing some work recently. And I think, Emma, you're on the student equity team? She's still with, yes. So Emma's on the student equity team. And the intention had been to take these equity agreements to the student equity team. But given the circumstance in which we're in and the work that they were doing to plan an assembly that's now postponed, that we did not get these to them before bringing them forward to the board. And we agree, that's an excellent suggestion that the equity, the student equity team, take a look at this, walk through this presentation and provide some feedback and some insights on the additional suggestions that have come in from the community so that their voice is included in this. That would be very important. The other piece around the size of the team at the high school relative to the others in the school district. I think it's relevant to say that that's the leadership team, but that they have done a lot of work to beyond what was district level professional development. They have done school level professional development on some of the half-day P D days. So those are the leaders of the work. However, every staff member has been engaged in this work over the last eighteen months.
I will say as well that you have some of the biggest equity advocates in the entire district on that high school team. Yes.
One last question. Is it possible to have more than one disability status? It seemed to add up to a hundred, which I was kind of thrown by. And maybe I just didn't do my math right. But I was assuming that you could have somebody that might have two checkboxes when it comes to that area.
That's correct. The that graph is based on primary disabilities. So even if you have multiple identified disabilities, your primary is in which that checkbox is represented on the graph.
Okay. Thanks for the clarifications and reiterate, this was, I really enjoyed the detail and kind of backstory and understanding kind of the journey that you've been going through over the last few years on this work and and kind of the call out that, you know, now we have, the real work is still in front of us where we have a lot more to do. And I think that that's a true statement. And it just gets to the the reality of we're a district focused on continuous improvement and always challenging yourself to do better. So thank you for driving this work forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add other. I was going to ask the same question as Thor regarding the students. But I I knew that we've had some things going on with COVID nineteen. I just want to say hats off to you and to all of the members of the district equity team. I've had an opportunity to attend some of the meetings with modules one and two. They've really taken it seriously and it's not something that just one person is grabbing hold of, but it's really, it's becoming a wave where the entire district is. So I want to thank you for this report tonight and seeing that. And I know we get back to the welcoming diversity committee that will have discussions about these agreements. And I again like the the language that you've chosen to use in a positive aspect. So thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I'll just summarize, you know, thank you Tracy and and Sarah for your work on this. And I appreciated the the journey that you kind of outlined that this has been a journey and will continue to be a focus and a priority for the district. And just kind of ending with that, Kim, as we look to do a board retreat, I was just pulling up the board mission and vision. And if we could, when we do have a board retreat, if we could take a look at that board mission and vision, the school district mission and vision, make sure that it's aligned with the equity agreements. I think there's a lot of things that are in there, but again, kind of the theme is perhaps it could be stronger callouts or stronger focuses. So let's, as we do a board retreat later this summer, let's take a look at that, those beliefs that are called out there. And how are we aligned? Or what is the wording that's in there compared to what's being presented tonight? So thank you.
Yes, and I believe this will inform our continued efforts to revise and refine our strategic priorities. So we were in two thousand twenty and our vision and strategic priorities were aligned to Vision two thousand twenty. So one of the things that I said that I would do when I entered this role is that I would review our progress on Vision two thousand twenty and begin the process for what our next set of priorities will be. And as you can see, that this is something that the district values. And based on the number of comments around equity at the beginning of this meeting, I believe that there are quite a few voices in the community that want to see this rise to a priority on our next round of strategic priorities. So we will absolutely have that conversation with the board. And I think we should continue to engage community voices in that strategic priority process.
All right, very good. Thanks again, Tracy and Sarah. Continuing with the agenda, then, next item on the agenda is a financial update regarding the proposed price, school lunch prices and fees for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. So Jonathan shared with us a report as well as a schedule that shows those. And Jonathan, if you want to kind of walk us through that or highlight the changes?
Yeah. So the first item that I wanted to touch on there was related to student fees. And so there's two areas where a school district can charge student fees. And that's going to be around consumable materials. So you think about copy paper and you're going to use that to print items that you're handing out to students. The other area is textbooks. And so we use both of that terminology right now in terms of how the student fees are labeled. We use specifically the textbook language at the middle and high school. So I want to do some analysis of that, just in terms of what we are spending for consumable materials at that grade six through twelve level. And so that chart there, you see information on what we're spending. I believe it's fair and accurate to say that those those dollars that we collect in terms of student fees are being utilized for both textbook and consumable materials for middle and high schoolers. And so I I provide that language for consideration and open to discussion for the board. I think that provides flexibility and understanding of how we're calculating that that fee on a year-to-year basis. That's specifically with the student fees. The second portion of the background item was on food service and meal prices. And so we had provided information earlier that we were waiting for the price lunch equity tool. And so essentially you're taking a look at the free and reduced reimbursement amount that you receive from the federal government and comparing that versus what you charge for a meal as a district. And then if there's a gap, so you're not charging as much as what you would get for a fully federal-funded meal, then as a district, you have to work to close that gap. And so that calculation says that there is a gap for the district and that we need to increase by ten cents for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. And so we can structure that pricing a little bit because it's a weighted average of all of our grade levels. And so you see a design of what we would do in terms of pricing to increase for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year to make sure that we're hitting that minimum as well as make sure that we're covering for increased costs. We're going to have equipment investments through the construction this summer and making sure that we've got the resources so that we can continue to have that be a self-sustaining program. So any questions that I can answer on student fees or meal prices for two thousand twenty-one?
So the conversation, go ahead, Joe. I was gonna say, so the conversation between consumable materials and textbooks, that that you're not recommending any changes except for how we account for them or how we call them out? Is that how I would understand? Is that what you're recommending? Is that the way we refer to them would be changed?
Yes.
All right, thank.
I just had a question. Oh, is that okay?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was gonna, so I think Thor had a, I think I talked over Thor, so I was gonna ask if he wanted to.
Oh, go ahead, Thor.
My question was just of clarification or maybe just confirmation. So the ten percent or ten cent increase is basically required of us? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So it's not like we have a a choice to make it less than that. It's ten percent, ten cents.
That's the minimum. Yes.
And I do think, you know, just seeing the rise of unemployment numbers and other things, obviously, that would potentially shift people to having access to free and reduced lunch. But I do foresee that we're, you know, with the economy the way it is, that obviously anything we can do to keep costs down as much as possible, I think is something that we should consider and think through to make sure that we're not putting additional burden on families, especially when it comes to some of the core components of Maslow hierarchy of needs.
Yeah, my only comment or question was regarding the the increase to and just tell us how other districts are handling this. I know in the past we've looked at how we compare. Is there any comparison that you can share with us in terms of our prices at this time?
I didn't provide that in the background document, but I would be happy to gather the area districts and provide that that comparison.
That that would be great. Thanks. I I know we we, at least the three years I've been on the board now, I think we actually froze. I don't think there was an increase at all in the last three years. Was there?
I can't comment on that. Offhand, I don't know the the answer to that.
I do not believe that we've had an increase in the last three years. I don't for sure. We have not had it in the last two years. And the calculations did not require that we did. The idea is that if school, our school reimbursement from national school lunch is at a certain amount, that we shouldn't be using national school lunch to subsidize the price of paid meals. And so that's why the calculation is in place. And we have not been required using this formula, which has been in place for several years now. We're not, we were not required to raise it, but given the calculations in the formula this year, there is a requirement to raise it at least ten cents.
Thank you.
And then I'm just looking, so we are not scheduled to approve the proposed fees, but you are looking for guidance so that as you build up the budget for the remainder of this summer or the spring and summer, that this is what you'll be basing the budget assumptions on. Is that correct, Jonathan?
So I think right now, we talked to, Kim talked about some of the things we're doing and looking at the budget and understanding changing scenarios that are happening based on lost revenues at the state level. And so student fees or athletic fees could be other areas that we could modify and consider. So we'd be looking for guidance from the board of whether or not that's an area to continue to explore based on the fact that there could be a state revenue shortfall in a budget repair bill for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. And we have to identify how we would bring our budget in balance at that time.
And those are all unknown at this time, just kind of preparing for it. How much revenue? How much revenue do we get from, from these fees, from the proposed student fees? I guess I'm thinking like the school fees, the textbook and consumables. In your, in your cover memo, in your cover memo, there's a column that says maximum revenue. Is that the revenue that we get on an annual basis? Or what is typically, how much do we generate in revenue from this?
Yeah, I would look at the year-to-date receipts that I showed. Maximum revenue doesn't take into account that we have discounted or waived fees for students that authorize the release of their free reduce status. So the year-to-date receipts gives you a better idea. So we're at about 150,000 that we're collecting in terms of student fees. There's another 60,000 that's budgeted for revenues for athletic fees. So overall to the budget, these are not our largest revenue streams. And so I heard Thor's comment about the economy and burden on families. And so that's, those are the pieces that I'm looking for in terms of direction. Is this an area not to touch because families have a lot that they're going to have to deal with in the year ahead? Or are we looking for any solution possible if there's a revenue shortfall to figure out how to balance the, the budget?
I, I guess I, I was asking about, you know, the total amount of revenue and $150,000. When you compare that to about a $35 million budget, that's less than a half a percent. It's around a half a percent of our budget. You know, when I, when I first got this report and started reflecting in, on this, it's, yes, there are going to be families that are impacted through unemployment, but there, there will also be families impacted by reduced work schedules. So companies are putting people on furlongs or asking people for reduced work hours. So, so there's going to be equal a number of people that are going to be impacted that may not qualify for free and reduced lunch. I would agree with Thor's comment of let's, let's hold on this. And I would also ask administration to take a look at, couldn't we do a one-year reprieve? You know, what would that look like? So if, if we reduce these fees by, you know, 20% or, or something like that, just, just to give families a reprieve that way, knowing that many of our families will be impacted, that won't qualify them for a free and reduced lunch. So, so that, that's my feedback. And I guess I, I'd like to hear what others, whereas others are thinking. And Jonathan, if that causes you pain as you put together the budget or, or what?
And one, one thing to clarify to my comment, totally agree, you know, I want to be, we want to think about and be considered on all different aspects. But I do think when it comes to some of those basic needs, like food, you know, any of the physiological or the, you know, safety-related needs of our students, we absolutely need to keep those at a bare minimum because there's zero chance that students are going to be learning if we're not addressing those needs upfront. And we know that our students are going through a lot right now. Just, and I would say not necessarily just our students, and I'm saying that more generically around the country. Students, families are going through a lot right now. And so we talk about, you know, not understanding or not knowing some of those things that Joe mentioned that are happening and how that caused undue strain or, you know, fighting for bandwidth with their, with their parents to actually get to work. And while they're trying to still stay educated and connected to the schools. And so just being considerate and cognizant of those things as we're thinking through the basic needs first and foremost. And then, you know, anything we can do in those other areas, you know, let's explore them. And, and I love the fact that you're, you know, all the work that you're doing to gather input from staff and gathering input from the community around different ideas, knowing that, or at least speculating that this is going to be a tough budget cycle as we move into next year. And instead of just waiting for it to happen to us. So, so I think these are good conversations in general.
All right, any other comments or feedback? All right, thank you, Jonathan, for putting this together. And, and we'll continue, you know, I think we heard Kim talk about the finance 101 presentation that you'll be sharing with the community at the beginning of May. So I think we'll continue to educate ourselves. And, and the hard part is we are in the second year of the state biennial budget. But with everything that's happening today and the anticipated shortfalls that the state government is going to have, I think it's wise that we continue to plan and prepare for this. So thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Then, next item on the agenda is continuing an update on the learning and programming during the school closures. So Kim, this is something that you shared out last board meeting. I think, given the, the nature of the changes, you've also brought us with an update for tonight's meeting.
Yes. So you have the written report. I think it's one of the things that I wanted to do during the meeting here is to share with you some examples of what our teachers and students are able to do during this, this time of distance virtual learning. We know what things are missing. We have, the teachers aren't able to face-to-face, put a hand on the shoulder, have a conversation and support a student immediately when they see struggling. And unlike in a classroom where a teacher can give a look or provide some encouraging words to, to engage students in the work when they are in their seats, which is 98% of the time for our students. We're relying on families for that at this time. And so we appreciate all of the parents out there who are, who are doing what seemed to be an impossible task until it happened of working and supporting their children in a very stressful time and getting them to the virtual learning space every day or on a regular basis. Because well over 95% of our students are engaged in their learning online. So some of the examples of that online learning that we're seeing, just so that you get a picture of what students are doing in this online environment at the elementary level, what you are seeing, some social media posts around. Our teachers are filming a video of themselves, reading a text out loud and teaching a reading strategy or a reading skill for students to then practice on their own, in the, in their own books. And we have found access to online books through a variety of resources so that students who may not have access to books at home can get access to books in an online environment through a free tool that we're using online. Our elementary, middle school and high school teachers, when they're teaching a new concept, whether it be math or science or social studies, that new concept may be taught either in a face-to-face video instruction. But a lot of our teachers are using a tool in which they can demonstrate using a drawing tool on their computer and they can narrate what's happening so that they can really model how to apply a skill or how to apply a concept online. So those are some simple things, but we've really had some people step up and do some advanced tasks and continue our work around project-based learning. So at the middle school, the health class had planned to be part of the community wellness event. And there was a project-based learning around health, health advocacy that is a culminating event for that project-based learning experience for students about advocating for health, help, advocating for health. So that project continued. They did the project-based learning and their public product became a video that they shared. And so those will be posted in the near future for those students who had a project. They continued that learning regardless. We had an eighth grade social studies teacher. They were working on propaganda during World War II. And then they applied that by doing propaganda posters around supporting the health and wellness of our community and flattening the curve by, by doing comparable posters for COVID-19. So really applying their experience now to some historical events and having them produce things that are new and creative. Our music teachers are engaging in some virtual activities in which they are each playing their part and they'll be compiled into a recording for, which is an orchestra performance or a band performance using the individual pieces. There are, they are building circuits. I, I don't know if you saw online some, how they're learning some physics comment, concepts. And there's a tool where kids can build their own roller coaster and test it. Now it's a virtual environment and so they set it up or a skate park. But they're able to do and test physics concepts in an experimental format. So, and then they're using other tools to, this one is one of my favorites. So they ventured into uncharted territory by writing, directing, producing and starring in the Nerd Flicks original movie Evidence of Evolution. So they, they're continuing their activities in an engaging way through this digital time. And while it's not the same as face-to-face interactions and relationships and getting the level of support that's needed within the school building, they are definitely continuing to learn and advance their work in that space. The other thing that's happened in the last several weeks is that we finalized some grading expectations and how students will be graded for this, this digital learning period. Those were shared with you. There will be grades issued at the high school level and credit granted. And how those grades are calculated was communicated with families. At the end of the semester, students will have the option to translate their passing grades from an A, B, C or D to a pass. And we'll be helping students and families understand why it would be beneficial to, to take a grade and why it might be beneficial to choose a pass fail option, but it will be class by class, student by student, choosing how their grades will be reported. But by and large, there will be comments and narratives at the elementary level to share with parents evidence of their learning over this distance, this distanced time. And finally, we're continuing to work on graduation and eighth grade farewell assemblies with the students as we continue to learn more about what a return to face-to-face gatherings will look like. And so if there's limits to that, we're anticipating possibilities and working with students for what that could and might look like.
All right, thank you, Kim. Any questions about this? And I, I appreciate the, the timely updates, given that things continue to change. Any questions?
Kim, can you speak on the special education and how that's going? I know that there's an equity piece there and trying to keep up with the IEPs and so forth. How is that playing out right now?
Is Tim still on? Cause he can speak a little with more clarity. I will say that every special education teacher is in regular contact with their students and the students' families and has provided some of the specially designed instruction or supports, the, the primary focus is providing supports for access to the regular curriculum. And if there are activities to work on skill development, they are providing some things that can happen. But there are gaps and so each IEP team will be meeting in the next, as we have a figuring out what's a return to normalcy to determine what compensatory services may be needed for students who's, who did not make the gains that they, that they could and should have because they were not in a face-to-face environment where they could get all of the services that were provided. So we're providing as much as we possibly can in this environment, but not everything is possible.
Yep, correct. Very well said, Kim. And just to follow up on some of the IEP-related meetings and things like that, we're having great success with connecting with families when IEPs need to be held, when evaluations can be held if possible, if we have enough data and information to continue with those evaluations. So we're really trying to handle this as much as possible on a individual basis to try to meet the needs of the kids. And for every, every student, that might look differently. So we're trying to be very cognizant of that. And a lot of the work that's being done is really that collaborative planning between our regular education staff and our special education staff to ensure that all of our students with disabilities have access to that general ed curriculum primarily first.
Okay. And, and are the, like the parent meetings taking place online as well right now?
Yes, correct. Where most are being held via Zoom. I've been able to be a part of a number of those IEPs and they've really been very, done very well. Parents have been able to engage actively in those processes. And I've received good feedback on, on how using Zoom has been effective and efficient in continuing to hold those meetings in a timely manner.
Perfect. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, any other questions about an, an update on the current situation?
If Emma's still with us, it might be helpful to hear how Emma's doing with some of the learning and what she's experienced.
Well, yeah, I actually had a quick idea. You did a really good summary. I think that the most important thing that has really like boosted morale, at least at the high school and even at the elementary level with my little brother is Zoom calls with classes. Not necessarily for educational purposes, but for that emotional learning piece of just connecting with the class. That has been super, super helpful and just being able to be like, yes, we're all in this together. But my mom works at Bradley Tech High School and they just had a new thing started where each, it's called staff member, has assigned 10 students that they check in with every week via email or a Zoom call. And I just think that's a really good idea for the high school level because while we, some classes are having Zoom calls, I think I only had two. So I think that's a good idea, especially with the end of the year coming up. And that could help start conversations over should you have pass fail or regular grades and things like that, so that we can get students on track. And also on top of that, I know guidance counselors are working hard to connect with students. So yeah, that's my two cents.
I think some of that's an idea that I will definitely talk with the staff about. Awesome.
Any, you, you mentioned a number, Kim, I think over 95% are engaged, which what I'm hearing across the country, that is phenomenal. So.
Say 95% are completing everything, but they have logged in and participated in their work.
Yeah, no, no, no. Okay. And I was, I was kind of curious, you know, the up to 5%, you know, how, how have we been, you know, attempting to kind of connect and engage those students to at least make sure that everything is okay?
By and large, those students who are struggling to connect, there's a couple of things that are happening. But by and large, those who have not connected with regularity are students who have been identified as English learners or students who are living in circumstances where they're struggling with access and connectivity. And while we've provided digital devices and we've provided hotspots to families if we are aware that they have it. The other thing that's happened is some of our specialists who typically support students within the classroom setting are connecting and reaching out and calling those families and those students to see how they can help. The other thing that we have access to that teachers are monitoring during their office hours or during the time that they're available for students during the day is we do have a tool on the computers where they can see what students are doing. So they can log in and say, where is my class? What are they working on right now? And sometimes if they see students online who are struggling with something, they can engage with them through a chat feature on that software. So while they're working on something, they can, they can, so if they're logged in, but they're watching a movie instead of doing their assignments and their parents think, gosh, they've been working for like 10 hours today. How could they not have their work done? But it's because they're watching a movie, then the teachers are engaging them and saying, hey, I noticed this. One of the teachers actually told me that sometimes she'll just launch the window on how to access your assignments so that they can encourage them or prompt them to, to engage. But more, most importantly, our special education teachers, our English language support teachers, our reading interventionists and our counseling staff are reaching out to those students who they know have not been online based on the conversations and calling them to say, how can we help? And working to motivate them to engage when, when they can and how they can.
Great, thank you. And one, just perhaps this has already been thought through with Ryan and his team. But, you know, I was noting the recordings of the Zoom for FERPO. But, you know, I was noting the recordings of the Zoom for FERPA. And I wasn't sure what the requirements were for storage and how that's being handled because I can imagine right now that people are uh doing that differently. Just so something to be thinking about is uh, you know, not near term, but uh kind of a longer term. Yeah, how long do those need to be uh maintained, if you will?
Yeah. Good thing to think about.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Emma. There there's some really good feedback um from a a student perspective. So thank you very much. Um, the next item on the agenda, legislative update. Kathy, I know you've kind of been feeling in the road. Do you have an update for us tonight or? I want to put you on the spot if not.
I don't really have anything tonight. I I would defer to to Kim if there's anything going on in Madison right now. I know that um COVID nineteen is kind of taking over everything, but the school funding was something that they were talking about. Have you heard anything on that?
Um, not anything new, but there definitely, there is going to be a budget amendment, that's for sure. Um, and at during my communications, I shared that there's been some things that have been passed around. Um, waiving the requirement for state testing about um waiving the requirement for the report cards, the school and district report cards that typically come out in the fall for the previous school year uh because they won't have the data from the testing. Uh, so there's a handful of things that are that are happening that I addressed in our communications.
And there, there's new data that they're actually asking from the districts now too, as far as this online learning, correct?
Yes, Act one eighty five requires that school boards by, I believe it is July first. I might have the date wrong. Um, there, we do have a DPI, by June thirtieth, DPI has to create a format in which we have to submit data around um engagement in learning activities, um engagement in delivery of food services to students during the closure period. So there is about eight to ten items uh through Act one eighty five that are required for school districts and school boards to report to the legislature by a certain period.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so we're at the end of our agenda. Um, so our meeting will be adjourned and our next board meeting then is next week. So given that uh we met the fourth Monday of April, we are meeting again next week um for our next work session. Um, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Stay safe, everyone.
Hey, bye bye.